Good evening. I'd like to call this Wednesday, September 10th, 2025, meeting of the City of Manassas Park Planning Commission to Order. The time is 7:00 PM. My name is Lester Finkel. Sitting this evening are Kevin Patak and Michael Beckett. At this time, I'll lead us in the moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance. It was by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item this evening is to approve the agenda. Any changes to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, whenever you care to make a motion to approve the agenda as is.
So moved.
Motion, second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next agenda item is the adoption of minutes from our August 13th, 2025, meeting. I've provided a number of edits to Lana already. Or any other?
Question for you, Lester. I, on the seconds, it seemed like some stuff was out of.
Place?
Place for the seconds on the motions, and I'm wondering if that can be just edited to make sure.
What do you mean, out of place?
So, let's see.
Like, certain people who were said to have seconded may not have seconded.
Were not, did not second, right. I think, I think I was listed as seconding a number of times, and I think I may have only seconded once during the meeting, so, so I think it, that was probably just a repetitive typo throughout the document.
Can you say who makes the motions in seconds? Sometimes the three of you.
Make it so quickly?
Yes, very clear, yes.
Okay.
So for the future?
I got you, for the future.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chair, it's appropriate, if you want to make, if somebody wants to make a motion to approve the minutes, that you could say with any changes that may be tendered by the members to the clerk.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you. I will go ahead then and make, offer that, or ask for that motion that we adopt, the meeting minutes with any future changes that the clerk may, may provide to the meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chair, one more thing, just in deference to the clerk, she did also ask, as you move forward, if you could say who made the motion, who made the seconds?
Okay, very good. I'll have to work that in, but thank you, I'll, I'll do my best to.
No, it's fine, we'll pick it up otherwise.
Okay, thank you. At this time, if there are any members of the public who are here to speak to a general item and not relating to the public hearings this evening, now is the time to, to step Don't see anyone, we'll move along. So tonight, we have the continuation of our two public hearings from our last meeting. We'll start with continuing the public hearing on rezoning RZ number 2025 dash zero one, Ivy Park. Before I give the opportunity for the applicant to come forward, is there anyone from the member, the members of the public who were not here at the August 13th meeting who would like to make a statement for the record this evening? Those who are not here? Okay. I don't hear anyone, then. I'll move along then to the applicant to come forward and may address any of the comments that were made and do a closing on your presentation.
Thank you. Good evening again. My name is Janelle Cameron with Walsh Colucci Lubalai, and Walsh here tonight on K, on behalf of Khevnanian. I have wanted to look around over, make sure I didn't miss anybody, but Martin Reiser with Khevnanian Homes is here, as well as our traffic consultant, Andy, and our civil engineer that's here tonight is Armando, and then Star and Bindu are here with me from Walsh Colucci. I have a quick presentation that I just wanted to walk through with you. We thought it would be best if we provided images to be able to address the feedback that we heard on August 13th. So you all are familiar with the site, the property location. It is located at the corner of Manassas Drive and Digital Drive. Sorry, wrong presentation. Hold one second. We thought it would be helpful just to walk through with you what we heard and put it into categories. So there were categories specifically as it related to procedure, crime, density, design, parking, and transportation, and how we believe we addressed each of those comments and responses to those comments. The first pertains to sort of procedure and what we did, so we thought it would be helpful just to provide a timeline. So we had a pre-application meeting with county staff in November 2024. We had our traffic study initiated during a scoping meeting with the city's traffic consultant, traffic engineer. We had our first submission in January. Comments were received from city planning in February. Our second submission was in May. We held a community meeting in July. We received comments back from the city in April. We had our third submission in August, as well as the Planning Commission public hearing. For our community meeting, we actually held that on July 23rd, and we invited everybody that you see within that red area. That was 505 people that we sent mailers to, to each address. Of those folks that attended, we had 10 people sign up, and less than 20 people actually attended that meeting. From the public hearing perspective, state law requires that the application be sent out to abutting property owners, the city staff, they give us that list, and we send those letters via certified mail. The hearing is also posted in the paper for two consecutive weeks. For our community meeting, the city also put that on the website. There were a lot of discussions regarding crime, but there were deeper discussions regarding affordable and the size of our units, and sort of a correlation between the affordable dwelling units that we're providing as it relates to crime. So we thought it would be helpful just to walk through the proffer. So we have proffered that four of the dwelling units will be made available to people making up to 70% of the area median income, and then five of the townhomes would be made available to people making up to 80% of the area median income, and that is based on a HUD calculation for the city of Manassas Park and the metro DC area. This here is a table that just walks through what those income limits are, and those are specifically based on the household size. So if you're a household of four, for that 80 limit, that's $106,800. And so the 70 and 80% limit are not your lower income. These are really your working class people. It's our firefighters, it's our police officers, it's our teachers, it's that middle income range, so we just wanted to really highlight that for you all, because I think sometimes when people think of affordable, they don't necessarily think of what that entails and what that really means for workforce as well. So wanted to be able to explain that to you. We also asked the city staff, Mickey asked the police department, if they could just provide a crime overview for this area to understand what that looks like for the past five years. So this was a chart that came from information that Mickey provided. It's a lot of information, but there were 123 offenses that were reported, 88 total incidents, and then what this slide does, it sort of breaks it down by what those incidents were for those areas, and then they mapped it. And so if you think about it, the 88 over five years, really on this map, it was centralized, and a lot of those incidents pertain to traffic, accidents, or vandalism. Interestingly enough, a lot of the incidents occurred at the school here, that there's that other rezoning for today, so just thought we would bring that up to you all. There was a concern specifically regarding Belmont Reserve, and that their parking lot area specifically in this location here is lacking lighting. The applicant would be willing to, as part of this application, proffer to provide them $15,000 so they could put lighting there in that area if they wanted to. There were comments regarding density, and we just wanted to walk through how this proposal, and it was outlined in the staff report as well, aligns with the comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan for the city center redevelopment area really focused on providing multifamily, higher-density uses in this area and consolidation, so this is in line with the comprehensive plan from a density standpoint. There were comments regarding public utilities. Really, the comments pertain to water and public schools, and from a water perspective, the applicant is required to pay what they call a tap fee, so a fee to connect to the public water. So as part of this proposal, the applicant will be connecting to public water. In addition, it's my understanding, and I know Mickey's here and Calvin's here, they can speak to this as well, but the city of Manassas Park has adequate capacity for water, so this project will not increase detrimentally the water that is provided to each of the residents. And there was a comment that pertained to what will this do to our water bill? So the more residents you have, that amount in the cost of the water is spread amongst those residents, and because we're not at capacity or close to capacity, the water bill should stay steady or decrease as you're adding additional residents to that. From a school perspective, this proposal will generate 15 elementary school students, six middle school students, and nine high school students. As outlined in the staff report and staff opinion, the capacity has decreased from the 2017-2018 school year by 378 students, and staff does not believe that this would be an issue for schools. There were comments pertaining to the existing vegetation, and I think I mentioned it at the last hearing at the very end, but this project currently is zoned for industrial and residential, so this project would be developed in the future. And what we are doing from an open space perspective, and it was outlined in the staff report, is really providing lots of opportunities for outdoor park areas. So we have a park area here, a park area in this area here, and a park area here, so there is green space on the site. This slide shows overall, so we are across the street from Signal Hill Park. There were comments regarding stormwater management. This is our plan from the GDP, it's our utilities plan, and what this shows, I will zoom in, is currently there is, I apologize, currently there is not stormwater management on the site, so it is not being managed, and essentially, the water is coming and it's running off to the adjoining properties. Our stormwater management facilities will be located in this area here and in this area here. What we are actually doing is providing a pipe here and a pipe here. So we will be moving the water, from a stormwater management perspective, away from Belmont Reserve and Belmont Station to our underground stormwater management areas here. The code also requires that you treat the water as if it was a vegetated condition, and so we will be improving the water situation, stormwater runoff, by this proposal. There were comments regarding the vinyl fence. So along the property line, which is here, there is, our proposed vinyl fence is here, and then three feet away from that, there's a chain link fence here, our vinyl fence will be here. The vinyl fence will be required to be maintained by the HOA, so maintenance will be on the HOA. If Belmont Reserve or Belmont Station wanted us to remove the chain link fence on the property line, we would be willing to do that as well. And this slide was the elevation that showed that vinyl fencing. Parking, there were a lot of discussions regarding parking on the site as well, so this application is overparked by the county standards on how we're required to calculate parking by four spaces, and we have this chart, I apologize, it's a little small, that we thought would be helpful, but the city's requirement is 201 spaces. Provided per code, so the city only allows you to calculate half of your garage, even though a full car will fit into the garage. And so we are 205 spaces per the code. In actuality, we are 248 spaces because we can use that garage as a full garage, and we mentioned that we would be willing to put into the proffer and HOA restriction, which Khevnanian has done in other projects and developments, and have been successful in that.
I'm sorry, could you go back to that slide?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, is the, is what you're saying in the provided actual is if the ordinance would allow you to count the garages as a full garage?
Correct.
I think that's disingenuous. I think that the ordinance in and of itself does not allow you to count that. Like, I see that the provided space, the provided per code, you're within code, I just think it's disingenuous in to try to present that you're providing more when you're actually providing at about what is authorized by code. It's, it's, it's nice, but most people here don't use their garages for garages, and, and the proffer, that's nice, but it's almost unenforceable. And I'd rather hear that you are within code than to pretend or to present that there's actually more than there really is by code, because most people aren't going to use their garages for garages. That's just a comment, it's, maybe it's even rhetorical, I just think that it doesn't really come off as sort of, I think it lacks integrity to, to the general public, to actually pretend that there's more there than there actually is there, based on how people might or might not use their garage. The reality is that there are 205 spaces, and that's okay, because it sits within the context of the comprehensive plan, the ordinances and things of that nature, but to sit here and tell us that it is really more than there actually is, just isn't helpful, especially when parking is a quality of life issue here. Thank you.
Okay. One of the other questions that occurred and came up was parking along Digital Drive, and how will that work with construction traffic? There actually is not parking that's permitted along Digital Drive, along this frontage area on both sides of the road, so we just wanted to provide you all those signage. Parking during construction will occur on-site. And so this is the property here, so here is Manassas Drive, this is Digital Drive, so you're not allowed to park on Digital Drive on both sides of the road. We had comments regarding traffic, so we just thought it would be helpful just to show you all visually traffic movements at each intersection. So what we did was we looked at what is the traffic today, what is the traffic in the future without our development, and the traffic impact analysis requires you to take into consideration approved projects that may not be built yet, as well as a 2% growth per year, and those volumes are the through volumes based on our scoping meeting with city staff. And then we have to look at what does it look like in the future with our project? They have also asked us, based on the community feedback, we looked at what does it look like in the future with our project and with the overlook project as well, at both intersections, just to be able to show the levels of service at all of the intersections remain the same. So today, without our project, it's a level of service B, which is AM, and a level of service A in the PM. And then when we do it, this is the future condition, so background, it took into consideration three projects without us, and we're still level service B and a level of service A. And then the future traffic with Ivy Park is still a level of service B and a level of service A. And then in the future with both projects, we're still at that same level of service. And then what our traffic consultant did was they looked at the overlooks TIA, and then added our trips to that as well, to be able to show at their intersection, it doesn't change those levels of service. So it's a level of service B in the AM, a level of service A in the PM, still a level of service B and a level of service A. So really wanting to show that with both projects, the traffic impact analysis have shown that there is no degradation to those intersections. And that is all I have, so I can answer any questions you have.
Questions from commissioners? Commissioner Patak?
Yes, so can you clarify which intersections we're looking at with that analysis?
Yeah, absolutely, and I apologize. So we were looking at, I always mess up the name, but Karondale, thank you, and Manassas, and that's the intersection in particular that the overlook was required to study, and then for Ivy Park, we were required to study the intersection of Manassas Drive and Digital Drive.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Beckett?
First, I want to say thank you for all the work that you've done to really sort of answer the community's questions, I really do appreciate that.
Thank you.
One question that I know I personally have was about the, the single way in, single way out. Was there any thought given to that?
So we looked at, and I will tell you, our, there will not be a tree here, so we do have to update that exhibit, but this access here, this was our emergency access only, it is too close to the intersection, so it wouldn't meet the intersection spacing, so you have to have distances between intersections and access points, so we would not meet the spacing there. There was previously anticipated that there's an interparcel connection here. We did get rid of that as part of our proffer, but we would be willing to add that back.
I think that would be nice.
Okay.
And the fence, the vinyl fence got a bit of attention. Is the fence necessary?
Right now, it's a chain link fence, but we thought it was necessary just to be able to delineate the properties, because that is also in the backyard of somebody else's home, and so we thought it would be best if there's a fence there in order to delineate. We're open to the fence material, but we thought it would be necessary just because that is also in neighbors' backyards.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If you're done with your presentation, we appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Administrator Barry, when you're ready to give the city's closing.
Thank you. I believe Janelle touched on all the points that I mentioned in the memo that was provided as part of the package. So I really don't have too much to say. If you have any questions of me or Calvin about the city operations and policies, I'm happy to answer those, and you do have draft motions in front of you for any type of recommendation you'd like.
Commissioners, questions? Mr. Patak?
So, I don't know whether now is the time to ask this, but obviously I have a number of reservations about the application, but I think they're fine. I think when I review and look at the comprehensive plan, the way I interpret it is that this project does seem to comply with the comprehensive plan. Is that what we're asking about here or not?
Well, that, certainly that is one component, and it does, does meet the, well, excuse me, the, the, what is called for in the comp plan. Our comprehensive plan is, is not really detailed about how many housing units or any kind of like number or classifying townhouses differently than what we would consider normal multifamily, which is, would be apartments. So it just really says any type of residential in the, in the areas that were mentioned. So as, as I mentioned previously, that we don't have density requirements, it's really on a case-by-case basis evaluation of the plans, and that, especially in the PUD district, which they're zoning to, that, that is a district that allows flexibility for them to do a layout in terms of how they feel best to use the property and, and provide some open space. But again, it, I mean, based on the, what they're presenting, it is consistent with the land use information and policies in the comprehensive plan.
And to clarify, the surrounding land in this case is all zone PUD, and it's single-family and multifamily dwelling units, correct?
Correct, I will, yes. Now, remember, this is in the city center redevelopment district, so it's on the edge of it, so actually, the property above the project is in the city center redevelopment district, and Palisades is within the city. Anything north and east of, of the project is multifamily designated, that's the land use designation in the comprehensive plan.
So this, this application does seem to be consistent or compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods. Would you say that's correct?
Well, I'd actually, that, that's a decision that the commissioners need to make. I mean, it, I will say it's consistent, but that, that is, that is one of the decisions of the body and the individual commissioners to make about whether or not you believe it's fitting into the city properly.
Sure, and thank you for that response. And the only reason I raise that is because obviously we've heard a number of residents speak out about this project, which seem to suggest that there is some unease, that the project may not be compatible with the surrounding areas, but, but, you know, since the commission is being asked to provide its, its vote on this matter, from our perspective, it is consistent or compatible because the surrounding areas are zoned the same way, and the units in the surrounding areas are the same types of units, essentially townhomes. This is, this is an 86-unit townhome development.
That is correct. They, they are not, they're individual, fee-simple townhomes, they will be for sale, and the people will own, you know, the lots underneath it.
Correct. Thank you.
Commissioner Beckett?
Just a, I guess a clarifying question. As we are preparing for a vote, and given my concern regarding sort of entry and exit, if we were to, how do, how do we sort of move this to the governing body? Is there an adjustment that we would need to make to a motion?
Yes. I didn't add particular issues, but you would, as one of the motions for modification, you would just add that in, into the motion.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. If there are no other questions, and thank you for the city, then at this time, I will request a motion to close the public hearing.
Hold on, because there seems to be a question.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
There seems to be a question.
I'm sorry, the, no, no, no public input. We, we did that the last meeting.
We indicated that the last meeting is, there wouldn't be an opportunity for a public hearing.
Only if there was, no, so I was advised that only if a member of the public was not present at the last meeting. So that's why I asked that. I appreciate that. Andrew Barry, I would like to request a motion to close the, yes? No, no, okay. Request a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Beckett, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Patak. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The time is 7:29. At this time, I will go ahead and make a motion, and then ask for a second, and we will take it from there. So I will offer a motion, so I move that the Planning Commission recommend to the governing body approval of rezoning RZ number 2025 dash zero one, to rezone the subject properties from I-1 Industrial District and PUD, Planned Unit Development to PUD, Planned Unit Development Residential, subject to the third submission of the master redevelopment plan, and the proffer statement dated July 17th, 2025. I move that the Planning Commission recommend to the governing body approval of the following zoning waiver. What I'm offering is that would be WAI number 2025 dash zero one A, increasing the percentage of residential as required in the city center redevelopment district from 75% to 100%. And then I move that the Planning Commission recommend to the governing body approval of the following public facilities manual waivers. The only one I will not to put in the motion is PFW number 2025 dash zero one A, which is to reduce the private. recommend to the governing body approval of the following zoning waiver. What I'm offering is that would be WAI number 2025-01A, increasing the percentage of residential as required in the City Center Redevelopment District from 75% to 100%. And then I move that the Planning Commission recommend to the governing body approval of the following public facilities manual waivers. The only one I will not to put in the motion is PFW number 2025-01A, which is to reduce the private street width from 30 feet to 26 feet. I'm not including that, but I am including PFW number 2025-01B, C, D, E, and F. And then, we just also want to add the emergency exit on the Belmont Reserve side of the property, if that's enough for getting it into the, the motion there. So, with that, I've offered that motion. Is there a second?
Second, Michael Beckett.
Second by Commissioner Beckett. Discussion? Commissioner Patak?
None for me.
No additional comment.
Okay. Then I will ask for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we'll continue then the other public hearing, which was initiated at our August 13, 2023 meeting, 2025 meeting, sorry. It's a comprehensive plan amendment CPA number 2025-02. We're continuing that. Were there any members of the public not present at the August 13 meeting who are present tonight who would care to speak? Seeing none. Then I will ask the applicant to come forward to, to address the comments that it would wish to address, and then to make closing presentation.
Spar. I am joined this evening by Steve Collins with the applicant and transportation engineer Kayla Ord with Grosslade. Our presentation this evening will focus on addressing the feedback we received at the public hearing on August 13 by the commission and the community. First, parking. As was mentioned during the August 13 public hearing, the zoning ordinance requires 432 parking spaces, because it directs us to count each garage space as half of a space and not a whole space. We are providing 499 spaces, as calculated pursuant to the ordinance, which exceeds the ordinance by 67 spaces. Kayla Ord will now address the transportation comments.
Hi, guys. So, as was noted the last time we met, this property was previously occupied by a private school. Before the school closed, we collected traffic counts to establish a baseline trip generation for comparison. So, the table here shows, can you see the cursor? Sorry. The table here shows the AM and PM peak hour trips, which represent the busiest times for the surrounding road network. In the morning, the school peak overlaps with the commuter peak hour. So, because of this overlap, the proposed residential use will actually result in a reduction in traffic during the morning peak hour. In the afternoon, schools typically experience their peak slightly earlier in the day. So, whereas residential traffic occurs slightly later and more in line with commuter peaks. So, this results in a small increase in the PM peak hour. Overall, however, the total difference is, is minimal. We did have to do a traffic study, so we looked at how the intersection of Grandelay, I said it right, and Manassas Drive would operate both before and after the proposed development, very similar to how Janelle explained it in the last presentation. And so, when looking at an intersection, we look at two main factors, the amount of delay, which is the time it takes to travel through an intersection, and the queue lengths, which are the backups that occur. These results are then graded kind of using a level of service scale defined in the Highway Capacity Manual, which ranges A through F, which again, you saw some of those results in the last presentation. In this region, level service D or E is typically what's considered acceptable. This intersection operates overall with the level service B, with average delays of less than 20 seconds. The queues were contained within the existing storage area. And then, when comparing the results before and after the site, the differences were minimal. City staff also asked that we review whether the intersection meets the requirements for traffic signal, and this determination is based on the standards outlined in the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, or the METCD for short. For a signal to be warranted, there's an eight-hour warrant and a four-hour warrant. I'm showing here the four-hour warrant, because it's usually easier to warrant. And you need to have a minimum of four hours per day that are over the threshold that's established in the manual. And so, as shown in this chart, we outlined the four highest hours during the day. You can kind of see here, 6:30 to 7:30, 7:30 to 8:30, 4:30 to 5:30, and 5:30 to 6:30, kind of outlining those commuter peak hours, which is what you would expect. And as you can see, those four hours, and this is future volume, with that growth and with the site trips, it is under the threshold, and a signal is not warranted.
Although staff is supportive of the application, they have identified one open question in the staff report. In short, while the traffic analysis concluded that a right-turn lane taper along West Grandelay Drive may be warranted, it would require the removal of the on-street parking and relocation of the existing bus stop. The community has been clear that they don't want the spaces removed, so we are deferring to the community and are not proposing the right-turn taper at this time, but would be happy to provide it if the commission disagrees. As noted at the March 2018, 2025 governing body meeting, the student enrollment has declined by 11.6% over the last seven years. The applicant is proposing the two housing types that generate the fewest students. Since the city hasn't, doesn't have a student generation factor formula, we utilize Prince William County's factor to get a sense of the anticipated student generation for the proposed project. Based on their factors, the development will generate 36 elementary, 19 middle, and 21 high school students. Given the steady decline, which UVA's Weldon Cooper Center for Public Service Projects will continue through 2029, these additional students generated by the overlook will not negatively impact the schools. Affordable housing, specifically for this project, affordable dwelling units, or ADUs, proposal this project are in conformance with the governing body's resolution, committed attainable for-sale housing options in the City of Manassas Park Policy and Guidelines dated October 1, 2024. These 11 units are intended to assist first-time homebuyers in the city whose income is less than 70%, or 108, roughly $108,000. As noted in the policy, the purchaser of any city-owned property that is intended to be used for residential development must provide for-sale ADUs, which we are. Reflected on the screen, our eligibility criteria, I know some people had some concerns about the ADU program, and I just thought it would be helpful to share kind of the eligibility criteria required for people who are applying to participate in the program. There was discussion among the community with regard to the Belmont Station property line during the last meeting, particularly regarding the trees. And so, I wanted to take a minute to kind of highlight that portion of the property and walk through a couple pieces with you. The existing trees are shown in green along the shared Belmont Station property line will be preserved. In addition to the trees being saved, the applicant is proposing to provide additional landscaping along this property line, as reflected here. And you can kind of see the landscaping that's occurring. Oh, I just noticed the line work is not there. Sorry. That's the property line. I should have noted that. The retaining wall mentioned in the prior hearing is shown here in the blue line. It's on the screen. Note that since the development of the existing school, the stormwater quality and quantity requirements have become significantly more stringent, and we are meeting all standards. In addition to the tree preservation that was proposed, that is proposed along the northern boundary, the applicant is providing 4.59 acres, which is approximately 35% of the site, as open space. That includes a 1.2-acre tree preservation area along the southern boundary property line along Manassas Drive. We have looked at the density, something that was also discussed, like you requested, and we believe the density as proposed provides a transition between the apartment building to the south and the townhome communities to our north and west. Therefore, we believe that the density is appropriate, and the traffic impact analysis supports our conclusion, as does staff. As neither the comprehensive plan or the zoning ordinance say otherwise, we continue to request your approval this evening of the proposed development. And with that, that concludes our presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Patak?
Yes, thank you for the presentation and responding to the questions posed by our citizens. Whenever you refer to apartment buildings to the south, which apartment buildings are you referring to?
There's the, I hope I'm putting it right, Park Place Senior. I always mess up the name. Park Place Senior is right here.
Okay, fair enough.
And then we've got the townhomes over there, and then we've got more townhomes over here.
Okay, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Beckett, do you have any questions? Commissioner Beckett?
So, what, so what I heard you say was, I presented what I presented. I'll give you some extra trees, but I'm not really changing much. And, and what I heard, and I heard you say that in the way that the community came here and was vehemently in opposition to the, to the density. And, and that included members of the governing body. And I just, I feel like you're just telling me we're going to do what we're going to do, regardless of what you think, and without regard to the 60 or so people who came here and showed real concern and consideration about the density.
May I add to Commissioner Beckett's comments there?
Commissioner Patak?
Yes, I, I do have concerns about this application, that it is not compatible with the surrounding communities, neighborhoods. And, and I do have concerns, too, that it involves, in part, the parcel that's recreational area. And we have very few, very little recreational area left within Manassas Park. And I don't think the comprehensive plan addresses adequately what we should be doing with the residential, with the recreational area, and that's, that's a matter to be resolved with the comprehensive plan. But I have reservations about using the recreational area for this development, as part of this development, when I have questions, and I think the community has questions as well in general, about the compatibility of this development with the surrounding areas.
Are there any questions for the applicant directly? Okay. Thank you for your presentation. We appreciate that. Administrator Barry for the city?
I, I do have a few, just update regarding the on-street parking versus the taper. Just wanted to go through that with you really quickly. Okay, I did the same thing. Wrong presentation. Here we go. Okay, I did, and you had touched on it, Commissioner Patak, but just go over the future land use plan and the existing zoning. You can see that everything is multifamily on that, I would say it's the west side of Manassas Drive, with the exception of, of this area, but everything surrounding it is, is multifamily. You do have a single family over here in the, on the Blooms Crossing development, which are mostly single-family homes. And they, it is currently zone PUD, and the, actually, the recreation property, the open space is zone B2. And I believe that was done as part of, it was supposed to be a commercial area at one time, and the zoning never really got changed. I was requested to look at density for the different developments, so I have provided that to you. Again, I did want to stress that although this was a topic of conversation, our comprehensive plan nor our zoning ordinance identifies or has any density limits in, in either of the documents. But here you can see that both projects kind of fit in between the different apartment complexes, as well as the townhomes. So, they are higher than the surrounding townhomes in terms of density, but they're with, they're in between the townhouses, density, the existing ones, and the existing apartments that you, that are basically adjacent to this property. So, there's 14, 14.5, if we round out, for Ivy Park, and the overlook is 16.2 dwelling units per acre. Sam showed this, so I don't need to dwell on this one. That's their proposal for the taper. So, I, looking at this and trying to figure out a way to try to have the on-street parking, as well as the taper coexist, I just went, I went out there to, to look at what actually is here. How it's signed is, is really the bus stop. There's two arrows pointing into each other, so there's no parking here. There's no signage between this no parking arrow and the stop bar. We believe that was an oversight, or maybe there was a sign before, and then somehow it got removed. We do have a requirement in our code section, Chapter 24, that requires no parking 30 feet from a stop sign. So, if you implemented that, I mean, you really only have a space for one car. So, I think, even though it's not there now, it would be staff's recommendation to sign that as, as no parking under the So, we have worked with OmniRide, the bus service, to kind of identify an alternative, and they were willing to reduce the, well, as we see, it already exists at 50 feet, but when compared to the applicant's proposal of 100 feet, which is their standard. But we did talk to staff at OmniRide, and they said they'd be willing to go down to 50 feet. And actually, they mentioned that this striping area, no parking area for the taper actually would provide additional, you know, space for the bus. So, they were comfortable with that. And keeping this no parking at the curb, there's still, there still would be with this design about 100 feet of parking on-street, which is about five cars. So, there would be some reduction, about two vehicles, but this would be, this is the staff's compromise, and it's changed from what I sent out just staff's compromise, and it's changed from what I sent out, just because I wanted to clarify that the bu, the bus stop would have to be relocated, and OmniRide had requested that if it is relocated, that it be ADA compliant. So I just wanted to make sure that was in there for that.
So that is the construct the right lane taper in conformance with the concept, concept plan presented by staff September tenth, 2025?
Correct, yes, yes, that is this one, yes. That's really all I had, I mean, the applicant did touch on many of the items, there were similar explanations from me in the memo that was prepared as part of the package, so I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from commissioners, Commissioner Patack?
I don't have any questions for staff.
Commissioner Beckett?
Could you talk a little bit about, so there's, the role of community voice in determining if a project should sort of be, be re-reviewed? I feel like there was such opposition to the density, and while there's no density sort of provisions within the ordinance or within the comprehensive plan, I feel like if we are only here to rubber stamp something because it fits within this, within the four corners of a piece of paper, then, then there's a foregone conclusion around sort of what happens today. But if we, if we sit here and remember the, the outpouring of concern, then it feels awkward that the, that, that the, that they've come back and said, essentially, we said what we said, without care or concern of what any member of this community mentioned, with the exception of trees.
Sure, well, as, your role as commissioners is, is a, in, a great, it's a great opportunity, it's a great way to serve your community, and when you look at these land use applications, you, you have a variety of factors to consider. And certainly, one of them is public comment. That is certainly in your realm of consideration, but you should also look towards the comprehensive plan, as well as, I mean, the zoning ordinance not so much, but it does comply with the zoning ordinance, and that doesn't necessarily change, it's just the standard, but as well as impact on surrounding properties. So, you know, it's just not, you can, and how you weigh them is, is your, essentially, you, you have that right, you enjoy that right as one of the planning commission member. So you do have a lot of evaluation factors to consider in making your recommendation. And again, it's a recommendation, the planning commission is serving as residents of a board, you know, a board of residents to provide recommendations on how the community development develops, excuse me. So yes, there's several factors, and, and public comment is certainly one of them, but not, but not the only one, but yes.
Thank you.
I believe the attorney has something to say.
Attorney?
Mr. Chair, just, I wanted to add to what Ms. Barry said.
Sure, thank you.
The other reason these applications are important is you go through periodic process of updating the comprehensive plan. So when you, when you have comments like the questioner made here, these are all factors that can be considered when you update your comprehensive plan. And the way you learn about what the community wants and what the community likes in certain areas is through this process. You haven't had many of these, but this gives you some data points and some input. So when you say that you're, you're sitting up here essentially being asked to rubber stamp, that's not exactly true. There are standards, they may be general and vague, but there are standards, and simply, simply because the public comes out doesn't mean you have to disregard the comments, they can be incorporated into future iterations of the comprehensive plan if that's what you'd like to do. And that's what jurisdictions do generally.
Commissioner Patack?
So could, thank you for that response, and, you know, I, to elaborate on what Commissioner Beckett said, we are in a very awkward position as a commission here approving something where we have concerns about it, or recommending approval, or approving a recommendation to the governing body, right? Where the comprehensive plan is deficient in specifying the things that are needed for us to make a good recommendation. For instance, with regards to the recreational land use, or rezoning the recreational land use, which is part of this application, our, our comprehensive plan does not address how recreational land can be used whenever it's rezoned to residential. And that, that's a concern. I, I, I'm being asked to, as a commissioner, to approve that or recommend on that, and the comprehensive plan is silent on it. So I really don't know how to judge that and deal with that.
If I may, and, and you've identified exactly the issue with the role that you all play in this process. You have to take the comprehensive plan as it's written, you have to take the zoning ordinance as it's written, and you have to take Virginia law as it's written. So you can certainly have your individual opinions, you all are residents of the city in which you're being asked to review and consider an application or a series of applications that are before you, but you have to take the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance the way they are written currently, as difficult as it might be for you to do that. And again, you're making a recommendation, you're not the ultimate decision makers on, on these applications.
But since the comprehensive plan is silent on the issue of recreational land that's been rezoned to residential as to how it could be developed when it's rezoned residential, I'm compelled as a commissioner to not approve that specific part of this, because the comprehensive plan is silent.
You can keep that for the discussion if you want there. If you have any questions for the attorney, please do ask.
Yes, no questions, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Administrator Barry? Seeing none, thank you very much, appreciate it. Then I will request a motion at this time to close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Sir, move.
Motion by Commissioner Beckett, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Patack. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, the time is seven fifty-eight. We have two votes to take on this one. The first one is the comprehensive plan amendment motion. I will make a motion and ask for a second, and we'll, we'll take it from there. So regarding the comprehensive plan amendment, I move that the planning commission recommend to the governing body approval of comprehensive plan amendment CPA number twenty twenty-five dash zero two to change the land use designation of the subject properties from private institution and recreation to multifamily residential. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Beckett, discussion, Commissioner Patack?
I think I had already stated my reservation about this, but I'll say it again succinctly. I, this is problematic for me to approve this, given that our comprehensive plan is silent on how recreational land can be used whenever it's rezoned to residential, and it doesn't spell out enough specifics on it, at least for me.
Commissioner Beckett?
For me, it doesn't matter who the developer is that's sort of seeking this, at some point, this is going to come to the planning commission and the governing body. I, I do think that there's a lot of work that needs to be done on the comprehensive plan, and I do think that that is something that should be taken up by staff and by the planning commission immediately after these hearings are over.
I agree one hundred percent on that. It can't come soon enough.
Very good. Any other discussion? Seeing none, then I'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
There's one opposition, Commissioner Patack, vote carry, the motion carries two to one. I will then move on to the other part of this, our discussion and vote. I will offer motion to, I move that the planning commission recommend to the governing body approval of rezoning RZ number twenty twenty-five dash zero two to rezone the subject properties from PUD, Planned Unit Development, and B dash two, General Business District to PUD, Planned Unit Development Residential, subject to the third submission of the general development plan and the proffer statement dated July twenty-eighth, 2025, with the following modification I will include as part of this motion to construct the right lane taper for West Carondelet Drive in general conformance with the concept plan presented by staff dated September tenth, 2025, showing an ADA compliant bus stop with fifty linear feet of clearance and approximately one hundred feet of on-street parking. I will also move that the planning commission recommend to the governing body approval of the following public facilities manual waivers. I am not going to include PFW number twenty twenty-five dash zero two A, which is the reduction, reducing the private street width from thirty feet to twenty-six feet, I will leave that out, but I will include in the motion the waivers PFW number twenty twenty-five dash zero two B, zero two C, zero two D, zero two E, and zero two F. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Beckett, discussion from commissioners, Commissioner Patack?
Given my reservations about the recreation land use for this, I think, I think it's clear that where I stand on this.
Commissioner Beckett?
No comments.
Okay. At this time, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Two to one, Commissioner Patack said nay, so it's two to one, motion carries. At this time then, we'll move along. Informational update from community development staff, Commissioner Barry, Administrator Barry, I'm sorry, I don't want to bring you onto the commission, Administrator Barry, thank you.
Yes, I, and staff, and you enjoy the, being the commissioner and making the hard decisions, which I respect that you're considering all these applications. We touched on the comprehensive plan a lot. We have been trying to finalize our contract with a, a consultant who, who will help us in this process. It unfortunately continues to be delayed. We do anticipate that it will be going to the governing body for award on October seventh. And the next planning commission meeting after the award, I was, I would like to bring in the consultant to do a presentation to the commission about their ideas and, you know, scheduling and involvement with the planning commission. They have outlined and, you know, what kind of process they would like to have with the community, as well as meetings with you to discuss the various chapters or issues. So yes, once they're on board, the next planning commission meeting, I, I would like them there to get this process started. We, we have waited, and it's time to, to really update our plan and make it the best it can be for the future. We are, we're looking towards 2050 for the plan, so I would love to get the process going, so it's just a matter of time, and we'll, we'll tackle that together. Thank you. I would also like to mention that on our October meeting, we will be sharing with you lot coverage issues as well as the grading plans, and, and go through what we've discovered and seek your opinion and advice on what we should do with that, whether, and this coverage, in the impervious coverage, in the, in the front yard as well as the rear yard. So that presentation will be forthcoming. Thank you.
Questions from commissioners?
No questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sir, move.
Motion by Commissioner Patack.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Beckett, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries massively, the time is eight oh three.